Let's call the Sinclair County Judiciary and Public Safety Committee to order. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasko, Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van Damme.
Here. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America into the Republic of its fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to, for the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Moving on to citizens to be heard. Darren Rushing.
Good evening. My name is Darren Rushing. There we go. That's better. President of Board here, and I'm currently running for Commissioner for District Three in the primary election. I'm here to talk about two things. First, I'll start with the negative and I'll finish with the positive. On Monday, I attended the Sinclair County Democrat Meet Candidates Forum at the Labor Hall. Sat there quietly for 40 minutes, not much, had a pleasant conversation with Clint St. Mosley, the Democratic candidate for state representative, or federal representative, sorry. Anyhow, about 40 minutes in, I got called out by the Sinclair County Democratic Chairman and was jeered, called some unpleasant names, and a variety of just poor conduct. While as I was led out of the meeting by a state-level Democratic strategist, tried to intimidate me, what bothered me is the same individual assaulted my wife. She attempted to snatch away some pamphlets and things from my wife, and when I pointed it out about who was being aggressive and so on, she progressively gave the stuff back. One of the reasons I'm running for county commissioner, as they stated when they opened it up, I believe in a fair and just society. There are a way to do things correctly. I started off, one of the things, Commissioner Beeden had a sign that fell over in the wind. I thought, I want to fix it because it's got to be a fair competition. You've got to do things correctly. You've got to stand up. You have to have, you have to have character. Sorry if I'm a little tired. We had a big deal at the prison today. Anyway, to get to the positive things, don't want to focus on the negative. I'm not that kind of guy. Running for county commissioner as a Democrat, one thing that I do, I believe in representation for everybody. Doesn't matter what the initial at the end of your name is. I don't care who you are, where you came from. I'll have that conversation. I'll take that phone call. If a constituent or an organization calls and asks for assistance, I'll take that call. We may not have the ability to have any great effect, but at least I can listen and I can possibly connect people with other resources and other connections and possibly come to a positive solution. I believe in open debate regardless of party. I dislike identity politics. I think everybody is pretty much tired of wanting to hate on the other individual for the last 10 years or actually probably about 20 years. I'd like to rebuild trust in the government, things like nondisclosure agreements and things like that. I understand that there's supposed to be a necessity for it, but if that comes before your constituents, I don't support that. You have to be a representative voice of the people you represent.
Got to wrap it up, Darren.
All right.
About 10 seconds.
In short, I stand for government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I believe in open and fair communication and debate. If you're a marginalized.
Wrap it up.
Please vote for me. If you're a Republican, it doesn't mean anything.
That's got to be it, Darren.
Any other citizens want to be heard for judiciary and public safety? Hearing none, moving on to prosecutor's update. No, we're on judiciary, public, safety. That's human services.
Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners. As you know, I'm Mike Mulling on the Sinclair County Prosecutors Attorney. A little background, I asked to be on the agenda today to deal with recruitment and retention. My office is in a employment crisis. We're down attorneys. We need help. We need help. And I'm not able to keep the people that I have and I'm not, I'm not able to recruit other people based upon the current financial structure that I'm working under. Just a little background, there are 15 attorneys that work in the Sinclair County Prosecutor's Office in addition to the chief assistant and myself. We are direct service delivery to the citizens that you represent. We're a mandated service. We handle thousands of criminal cases every year, hundreds and hundreds of child abuse victims, child abuse neglect cases. We work 24 hours and we service over 100 police officers from eight to 10 different agencies within the county. We're on call 24 hours a day. We're also people that are in your community. I have members, my staff, they're on both hospital boards, Coach Little League. Almost every not-for-profit agency within this community has an assistant prosecutor myself serving on that board and are active servants on those boards. We train local law enforcement on our own time. We answer the phone at night, search warrants. We walk people through the criminal justices who have been victims of sexual assault. And we also go into the schools and try and teach your children and grandchildren how to protect themselves from people who may assault them. It's not just a wage and grade job. It's not just something that we do hourly and we go home at 4:30 and we stop working. It's something we do every day. And the people that work in that office do an excellent job at that. They also are people that this county's invested a lot of money in through extensive training, arson investigation, DNA profiling, drunk driving prosecution, sexual assault, forensic interview protocol. All of those things are training issues that have to be done that we send our, our members through in your, in you as county citizens and as the county board finance. That extensive training is very expensive and we finance that through our own programs, through our forfeiture program that is not part of our mandated service, through drunk driving enforcement program that our staff started, designed, and has followed across the state of Michigan. And that generates enough funding to pay for the training that my people require. We also provide support to schools when they have problems, to county fair, to other county departments, to medical professionals, to the health department, to many other county departments. And we do that as part of our mandated service and the service we provide to people in the county. Reason I'm here to talk to you today is I'm currently under a staff crisis. There are, I provided everybody on the board, I think everyone on the board has the written presentation that I've, that I've provided, includes some research, includes a proposal. At the end, it does ask the county board to consider a proposed leser, resolution that I drafted that would change or reclassify the employees of the Sinclair County, the professional employees of the Sinclair County Prosecutor's Office into a pay range that's competitive within our market. I'm asking the Board of Commissioners for help in recruiting and retaining the staff that we currently have financed, have trained, and have brought to the table, and also help me in recruiting good talent to come to this county to represent crime victims and law enforcement. I remember from the 2023 State of the County Address, we talked a lot about priorities of the county and what we're going to do in 2023, and one of those things were employee retention and recruitment. We haven't done enough because at the current situation we're at, I cannot find attorneys that will come here and work for the Sinclair County Prosecutor. And that is not something that's been my whole career. That is a new circumstance. In the last 30 years as a prosecutor, 20 as the elected county prosecutor, I've never been in a situation that I'm in like I am now. I put out job applications. I put out our pay range. I put out, I go to law schools. I've been to both the law schools with Michigan State University Law School and Wayne State Law School recruiting employees. They are just not out there. And the ones that are out there, who can do what we're, we're entrusted to do by citizens of this community are being taken from me based upon better offers, more money, less hourly. So the crisis that we're currently under, there are 15 attorney staff that work in the courtroom, litigation staff. Currently, there's 17 of us that are working in the courtroom every day, litigation staff. I have three open positions. One's been open since November 2023. Three open positions that I have zero applicants for. I have one pending retirement that's coming in September of a senior APA that's scheduled to retire on her first retirement date because it's more lucrative for her, I imagine, to go off and work private practice and collect her pension. I also have two employees in my office who are actively interviewing for other jobs in other, either other county departments or other offices. Since 2019, I've lost 10 staff attorneys off my staff. And all of them on good terms. And on their exit, I did accident interviews and I asked them, what's the difference? What will keep you here? Why are you leaving? It was almost invariably higher pay, better benefits, less workload. I'm now hiring contract attorneys to help us with our appellate division at $150 an hour. And I have a private attorney who works on the outside, who left my office to go to private practice, who are now compensating to come back and help with appeals. I have extensive overtime. In the, in the month of March, the employees that I currently have that are covering the cases that come through our office, I had them log overtime in the month of March just to get an idea how much extra hours in addition to 37 and a half hours a week that they're working. They logged 229 overtime hours. And they're not compensated for that. They do that because they care about what they're doing. So I thought, well, where are these people going? Like, why are they leaving me? Like, why are they leaving the office? Because they aren't unhappy. So I did some research. I lost one to the Attorney General, Michelle Weeks. She left for about $13,000 additional pay, $15,000 additional pay. I lost two to Wayne County Prosecutor, who received a 21% salary increase last year that applied this year, and are offering a $15,000 bonus for people that stay more than a year, each year. I lost one to Oakland County that's currently paying 20% more than we are. I lost two to private practice, one of which is working locally and I didn't ask her what she's making. The other came back to the office for our summer, during the summer, to talk to us about kind of how her job was going. She said she's making $40,000 more working in Lapeer County. And I lost one laterally to the friend of court because that job is entirely less stressful and at 4:30 it's over. And she said for her family, it was a better fit for her. And then I've lost two, Jennifer Deegan and Mona Armstrong to the judicial bench. Of those lost employees, we've lost an extensive amount of experience and training. And through my work in the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan, my colleagues that took those people are very happy with them and they're very thankful that we paid to train them so that they could go to their counties. This, I'm not the only county that's having this problem. I did call my friend in Genesee County, David Leighton is the prosecutor there, to discuss the issue with him and I was hoping maybe I had an intern or someone I could hire. He said he's lost in the last six months through resignation, five assistant prosecuting attorneys, all for money and benefits or due to workload, same reasons I have. One to the AG, $12,000 raise. One to the public defender at $7,000 more a year. One to private practice at $10,000 more a year. A second to private practice at $16,000 more and an APA to a neighboring county that paid $22,000 more in that county. So I started doing some research, trying to figure out, is this just me in Genesee County or are there other people that are having this problem? And I joined the National District Attorney's Association, joined the Recruitment and Retention Committee. I did the same with Prosecuting Attorneys Association. And I found, and I also did research and Steve's helped me a ton in putting a lot of this stuff together. Just all the different things.
Bringing criminals to justice, but across the country, it is getting harder for prosecutors offices to hire attorneys.
Nationwide shortage of prosecutors is also fueling the delays. WFA 12, Peter Porter Jr. Avent has detailed.
An unfortunate situation has been discussed.
And then as the NDA rep, they're trying strategies too. And they're coming up with different ways to try and keep staff attorneys within their counties, within their offices, from California to New York. And, and they're doing career fairs and they're doing law school programs and they're trying to reduce vacancies. Others, other states that are also having the same problem, as I did research, New York Times, why hundreds of New York City prosecutors are leaving, New Berns, low pay, pandemic delays. State of Wisconsin, staffing shortages, same problem.
Trouble for the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office.
Staffing shortage began a bad year. It seems from the pandemic has a spread rate. No open positions. More of these offices have staffing shortage began and it's been hard for prosecutors.
Now to retire prosecutors.
More than that. Victor Williams live. Victor really gives you a sense of the type of situation.
The backup is 15, 13, 15, 19.
Just stamping words across the state of Michigan. That's the county's primary, the latest on how it's giving attorneys cases. And that crisis continues to continue to create massive load for attorneys. The county, the county attorney tells me that it's back to the justices. It's not something that's unfair to them, but most important, victims as well.
I've been in prosecutors for decades and I can tell you I'm tired of crisis like sweating my entire career.
Just, just by my staff, it's heavy turnover.
An update that we told you about earlier on the week. Major shortage to the number of prosecutors in Michigan. Tonight and the Prosecution Attorneys Association of Michigan will be meeting if you're out of self.
A new channel, Ramit talked to the president, who introduced the county prosecutor.
Prosecutor Jennifer Johnson, this is a problem that's been worse for several years now. Tells me that it's a citizen, not only here, but across the nation.
We need to have supplemental help from the state. Few priests in the amount of mine that took it out of the altar and crew.
Kalamazoo County prosecutor, Judge Jennifer says prosecutor across Michigan, he's lost. He tells me right now, in 33 counties, in a state, that is being felt. Prosecutors have to get the job done.
When, when you consider this problem in light of the amount of possible candidates, this being on the retention side, people are leaving for other jobs that pay more. On the recruiting side, to try and replace those open positions, we look to law schools, we look to power passage rates, we went to those things. In that situation, this is actually out of Wayne County, also commenting. And in some of these counties, I picked four, Kalamazoo, Cass, Genesee, Wayne, and Kent. And those four, five counties all have the same problem. This is an article on the, in the Detroit Free Press or the Detroit News out of Wayne County.
A big reason for money. County prosecutor, Wayne says prosecuting its place or APA union. They're paid 67,000 a year, pay 82% each year, and get about $16,000.
And these are, these are, I think they're really before, I don't know. In those cases, those instances, it's like maybe 25, 30,000 a year. That APA set up, two that he got, the general office, and then I have one that's gone to small. And yeah, I keep talking, if they're going to make more money, it's a six, seven of our money.
With one attorney, he puts a burden on the others. It's not easy to be replacements.
Usually I bring up my attorneys with one year of experience. Sometimes I'm having attorneys just on a staff call. And I've had recently, I've had them in the head. That's how difficult it is.
So when I started thinking, why is it that we're not getting any new applicants in the prosecutor's office when you put job opportunities out there, you start to look at the trend through the Michigan bar exam. I'm going from 2009 until now, they've cut the passage rate in half. The last two bar exams have been 35%. The people who took it in February failed or passed. And in 2024, February, it was actually 55%. So as of today, I checked the prosecuting attorney's website that holds applications or open positions for Michigan prosecutors. There are 45 active assistant prosecutor postings in the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan. All of those people are looking for, for attorneys. They're all looking in our area. They're looking in my office. They're looking at Macomb County's office. And everyone's competing for the same talent. I pulled down some of the ones within our region just to get an idea of what they're offering for those people. Our, the Sinclair County Prosecutor's Office is offering a $63,000 starting pay. Every other county, Lapeer County at its highest is $86,000. Wayne County, they are offering 75. And in Macomb County, they're offering 75. So we're more than 10% below even the prosecutor's offices in our region. And then you start to think about the high end. If I decide, I live in Emmett, I could get to Lapeer just as easily as I can get to Port Huron. If I turn and head the other direction, in Lapeer County with my experience level, I'm at $133,500. In this county, I'm topped out at probably 110, which is 20, almost 25% differential. So I pulled down the counties, the SEMCOG counties, because we often compare ourselves here in Sinclair County to SEMCOG. We want to be part of the bigger southeastern Michigan area. We want to be competitive with them. And if it was a Chrysler plant that was moving into Marysville, we would be looking for incentives to get that plant in our jurisdiction. We would not say, oh, by the way, Macomb County is much bigger than us. We'll let them have that Chrysler plant. And we wouldn't be saying, oh, Macomb County is in a better situation. We're not, we're not going to pass. Or we're, we're going to offer exactly what Macomb County is offering. We would try and find a way to incite those, that talent, that industry to come to our area. This is the area that's stealing my people. It's Oakland. It's Macomb. It's Wayne. It's the EG's office. And they are paying significantly more. And I get it, they're bigger counties. They may have more money to deal with. But we have a unique resource we're trying to recruit. Litigation attorneys who do prosecution, deal with victims every day, and understand and can litigate criminal law at the drop of a hat. Those are the people that work for you in the Sinclair County Prosecutor's Office. Those are the people that Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne are stealing from there. The difference is substantial when you average those counties that are in the southeastern Michigan council of government. Also, if you just look regionally, Lapeer, Macomb, Oakland, Wayne, counties that are close, that I can drive to, counties that I can get in my car and go there, we are 22% behind on the high end what those counties will pay. We're on the low end, we're 10% lower, $17,000. And so these law students are coming out and they're applying for different offices. They're not even taking a look at the job posting I'm putting out there on the Prosecution Attorneys Association. God forbid I put it out in the general legal field. No one's going to come and work for 10% less. They don't even send me a resume. And all these counties are looking for people too. So I'm asking the county board to think about those comparables as a present employer and think about similar counties that are in our region, that are places where our people will stay living in our county but go and drive to. I'm asking us to be a destination county for talent in the legal field, not a donor county. The destination counties that are successful are being proactive and they're coming up with ways to keep people here. The counties without staff issues like Lapeer gave 20% last year across the board to their employees. Wayne County gave 24% to their prosecutors and gave a $15,000 retention bonus if they stayed more than a year. Macomb and Wayne have always had higher levels and they become a destination county for our people. State of Michigan is, is probably 15 to 20% higher too. And they also are giving incentives to employees to stay in county employment, signing bonuses, longevity rewards, and pensions. And I know the days of pensions are gone, but Lapeer County has found a way to resurrect them. And I think if you look at the way in which we, we retain employees in the road patrol versus in the corrections division of the state county sheriff's department, you'll see the corrections division's in trouble and the road patrol is not because road patrol has a pension. I'm not saying we go back to that, but we have to find ways to replace that incentive to come and work for us. So my ask, the proposal is before you, is a resolution, and it reclassifies the professional staff within my office in a wage range that's competitive with our regional, our region, our state and our competitors as far as good talent for legal services. It has a zero budget impact this year. I'm not asking to move all my people from the top of the scale they're at now to the top of the scale they're going to be at if they, if we reclassified. They'll start right where they're at now. All it will do is build them steps within my budget that they can move farther. They can project forward for five years along the steps and they can see themselves five years from now being in the range where our competitors are. Not all at one time, but it gets a light at the end of the tunnel. It also gives me the ability to go out and recruit employees and then look at a range where they could actually have a career here that would be better than staying in Oakland or staying in Macomb or driving down to Washington. And I know what the response to my request is going to be. And frankly, Carrie and I have talked about it. And I know their position of administration and I know the position of the bargaining. I am not here bargaining for my employees. I'm here trying to get tools within my office to carry out my constitutional function. And I'm asking the county board to assist me in doing that. Strangely enough, the tools in my office, just like 60 to 70% of the assets of this community, our people, our labor. And if we're going to have good labor, we're going to have good equipment, we're going to have good tools to provide a service to the public, we have to pay for that. My employees have, are now to the point with, with this county that they feel that they're not valued. They feel they have no bargaining power. They're told every time they go to negotiate. They're told every time they go to negotiations, you get three percent across the board like everybody else. Don't care that you can find other jobs, and they say you are so below the competitive market. And they're told, then you should probably go get a job there. Now they've done it, and they're still doing it. And they're planning to continue to do that. So I'm here advocating for the people that work for you in the St. Clair County Prosecutor's Office. I'm not advocating for myself. I'm not advocating for Steve Gilliott. I'm here advocating for the people that do the work every day. And I would hope that you would consider my resolution, you'd place it on the full board agenda, and you pass that resolution so it can go into effect as soon as possible. Because every day that goes by, I have another person waiting. Does anybody have any questions?
I got a couple. So when you were saying that you're hiring your appellant work out at 150, 50 an hour, I'm assuming that comes out of the prosecutor's budget?
It does.
Passage rate, I found that interesting. Is the bar harder to pass today than it was ten or fifteen years ago?
They instituted the statewide bar exam, and it just got harder. I don't know why. There's a lot of talk in the state about why Michigan's so much harder than other states, and they're going to try and affect that, but it doesn't help me. And eleven percent less people joined law school last year. So the students that are going from undergrad and deciding law school is going to be my career, there's about eleven percent less last year. So it's just, it's just a supply and demand issue. And when you ask where the money in my budget came from, my budget's fine, because I've got three openings I can't fill, and I'm going to have four.
Essentially, your ask is for some reclassifications within your existing budget, not going to increase your budget.
This year, and to be, I mean, to be completely honest, yes, it's going to drive into my budget years into the future, because they'll be moving up the scale. But this year, it would be a no impact. Next year, I think I can cover it based upon the inability to fill the positions. But eventually, it will be a cost to the county. But it will make us competitive.
I got a few questions.
Okay.
You have in your, what you gave us here, 229 hours, that was for March of 2024. Is that for thirteen attorneys, fifteen attorneys?
That's for all of them.
Okay, so if I do that, that's less than four hours, about, oh, fifty-five hours a week. And what do they get paid overtime? Nothing?
No, they're salaried, so they don't get overtime.
Okay, so no overtime. The attorneys that you're hiring at $150 an hour, how many hours have they put in that are? Just a best guess, I don't know. I'm trying to do the figures here, and I'm looking at what you're potentially looking at in five years as a $250,000 increase in your budget.
$250,000. And they take, so if we get appeals into the office, it's an appeal that is, we'll send out select appeals to that office.
Because I also think that we need the best qualified prosecuting attorneys. I mean, it's all about money, and like when Josh was at the meeting, I can't take, at least I wouldn't, I'd have to consider where are we going to get that money from if we have to take it out of the budget from another department? Because we only have so much money. And to do that, if I'm looking at, and see if my figure is what you've explained to us, in five years, you're looking at about $250,000, $50,000 a year will get you into the competitive rate.
So I've got fifteen attorneys I'm talking about is probably a ten to fifteen at the end. And the fifth year, it's going to be a twenty percent increase based on what they do now.
It'll be about $16,000 increase per, fifteen times fifteen is $225,000, so that's how I got the $250,000. So, and I definitely want you to have the best people you can have, because that benefits St. Clair County. We don't want to have, for lack of a better term, somebody unqualified, rather than have somebody qualified that loses a case, slip of word or something, that somebody that should be in jail gets out. So I don't want that to happen. I want us to have the best prosecuting that we can have. So there's many things to go through here, and Carrie's going to be going through it. And she'll recommend us, I imagine, if we're going to consider this, to redo a reclassification, and then the money's got to add up, so you've got to look at all this, and maybe already have.
So these employees are all covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and wages are a mandatory subject of collective bargaining. So any, any adjustments, these adjustments have to be collectively bargained with the union. We could face unfair labor practice to do this outside of the negotiating process. That being said, there is a closed session that will be scheduled. We had intended scheduling at the full board meeting to discuss our negotiating strategy. This union's contract expires the end of this year, so we will have some proposals for the board's consideration to address the issue. And Mike's department isn't the only department that has some recruiting challenges.
It's everywhere. I mean, when Josh was there, I'm saying you have the same issue with police departments and the deputies that serve our county. It's a tough job, and the money, am I going to do that, put my wife out there as a deputy every day? If I'm not getting enough revenue, I'm going to go find, go work at home people. I'm just using somewhere, but.
Well, I would absolutely disagree that the county board can't do this. This is a situation, the county board has the power to set wages for employees. I don't think anybody's going to complain if they're getting an opportunity for a salary increase. I know last year, we gave $3,500 out to every employee mid-year outside of bargaining. And I know Macomb County did it last year on the fly and gave all their employees eleven or fifteen percent inflation change. So I think the county board can do this.
Well, a one-time payment is, and I do the same thing with my employees, a one-time payment is much easier than an hourly rate increase, because that's a one-time payment. If you have the money, you can pay it. If not, that's an ongoing cost continually.
But to say you can't do it, you're forbidden to do this as a county board, I think is incorrect.
We're going to be in closed session next week, and we'll put this on, you know, for discussion.
Mike, have they done anything at the state level for this, to even look at it?
Yeah, so at the state level, the legislature is also recognizing there's a problem out there with prosecutors. I know that they, last year, allocated $5 million for a pilot project to send to counties that had the highest crime rate in the state. Fortunately, that's not us. And then this year, they allocated another maybe 30 million, and they sent, they raised that to sixteen counties. We're still not one of the top sixteen violent crime rate.
There's, but there's no other programs out there right now that we can fall into? Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. All right, moving on to, we have no conceptual initiatives, our old business? So we're moving on to new business? Need a motion for secure us?
So moved. Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie. Moving on to probation, renovation furniture from Kurt Albert.
I'm making a motion to move that to full board.
Second.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie. Year-end 2025 residential substance treatment grant application for final action.
I'll make a motion for final action, and this is a grant application.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's for final action, it's got to be roll call, sorry to, oh, I'm sorry.
Application. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Carrie. Tower project and radio upgrade from Central Dispatch. Tina?
Yep. The packet showing the maps of the towers, does everybody have that? Yeah, it's in the packet.
It came in our packet.
You'll see two different maps. One, the list will show you where it says the Ira New and Marine City New Tower map. And you'll see the colors. It's kind of confusing if you don't know what you're looking at. And you can see that the dark pink is greatly improved over the one that doesn't have the Ira Township and Marine City on it. It also extends out into the waterways where we're having some difficulty with coverage areas when Dispatch is trying to talk to the Marine Patrol, Fire Departments for water rescues out in that area. Our infrastructure for the towers, I believe the last two towers, if my information is correct, that I researched, showed where we added three of them in 2009. I believe it was K-PAC, St. Clair, or two? No, maybe Port Huron. It's an old system, and we have a lot of gaps in coverage area for communication. And it's something that if we don't do something now, it's something that we need to be putting money aside for, to build up the infrastructure. We've had issues with our paging in the Marine City area. In particular, that's been a known issue since I became the director back in 2018. And they looked at micro tower sites, that was only a one-way communication system. For the cost for that, and it really failed, the project never took off. It's the coverage areas. All this green on the one map that doesn't show the new tower sites, this is like the start of what we need to do. We also need to get two more tower sites up in this end of the county, but we started with where we have the worst coverage area and paging issues for our Fire Departments in the south for the beginning part of the project. For what I'm being told, the engineering costs, when you look at that, if you choose to just add one tower and not the second one, and look at trying to add a second one down there later, you're going to have at least, if not more, that same engineering cost, which is your first line item there in the top. We're also asking, as part of the project, they gave us a heavy discount. The radios inside the Dispatch Center have to be upgraded, they're end of life. If one of them go down, I can't replace it, they're 7500s. And all the Dispatch Centers in the state of Michigan are upgrading to the 7500Es, is what they're called. If I put a new 7500E in the center, I have two radio Dispatch positions that don't have radios on them. So when we have heavy storms or heavy incidents and I bring in extra staff, I'm almost useless because I don't have radio coverage for that, for those two working stations that I have in the center. I can't add two new radios without upgrading all my radios inside the center. So that's the problem I'm challenged with right now. They did put a heavy discount on that included in on this tower package. So there's two pieces there that's being proposed in front of you.
All right, and then, since I've worked on this with Tina quite a bit, we're having issues also with police and fire inside of buildings. This is going to help us out in the water, but also in the large buildings. Like Anchor Bay High School, we have very little coverage right now. And what we do when we go to a major incident there, as a first responder, what we have to do is flip over to a different style. Our, it's a radio-to-radio communication, which then, they're out of the loop. Central Dispatch can't hear our transmissions. It's basically more of a, as layman's terms, is a walkie-talkie to talk from radio to radio. And the problem with that is, is we've had, in the emergency services, we've had people get hurt because that central is our backdrop. They can hear things sometimes that our incident commanders can't hear, and you never want them out of the loop. And with the radio system right now, even a, even as small a building as, say, the Marine City Riverside Cinemas or the Plaza, we've had structured fires in the old Kmart building, and we can't get out. Our guys can't get out inside the building. They can't use the radios inside the building. So this will help that also, but it's also a step, because we're going to fix the areas in that area, because it's some of our worst radio transmissions now. But we also have to keep working at increasing the viability of the radio system. And like Tina said, the next step would be in the K-PAC, in the Yale area, both have dead spots.
I'm assuming the state system, they have not put any more towers. And I was part of this whole thing however many years ago, right? You know, so the state has a couple towers?
Yes, two.
Okay, and then I think we started out with three towers originally. There was a big hole out in Yale, I want to say at times, so we backfilled that. And then, it's well documented, I've been down to Marine City, no coverage, pagers, you know, so on and so forth, so this is just, I think, another piece of the puzzle that.
And we're also, we've also got the Marine Lieutenant here because the issue's out in the lake. And Marty, could you come up for a second and explain some of the radio issues we're having out there? Because they're not, they're able to receive, Dispatch has got a strong signal, but it's his, his staff that can't. They have to sometimes drive to areas to get their signal out.
Lieutenant Marty's going in the Marine Division, Diet Team. That's true. I know for a fact, for example, Javi Noonar, that is the furthest south point of playing township of the county. And this year, we had about 500 boats out there. And with all the other entities that are out there, the state police had a boat, the Board Patrol, Diet Team Fire, with all of us out there on our channels, there were times we could not, we could not talk to Dispatch, it kept bonking. And I think that's a big part of this, is due to the lack of capacity that those southern towers have. So another tower in that area would definitely increase.
And then you guys are under a little more pressure now with the Coast Guard. They're not vacating the area, but they don't have a boat in the water in our southern area anymore.
In years past, we would get a lot of response in the south end of the county from St. Clair shores. So that's a straight shot across for them to help respond to any calls down at the south end. Well, St. Clair shores has stopped emergency responses, and now they have to come from Belle Isle. So that's an increase of probably forty, forty-some minutes, depending on the weather.
And then we also have such a large number of increased number of boat traffic in the moot and in the other bays now. I don't know how you find a boat out there.
It's a, it's a challenge ever since COVID. Obviously, boat sales were increased 35% for multiple years, and the traffic out there is not like I've seen it in years. And I've been boating out there since, you know, a few years, many years. I grew up in Tuscaloosa, so 30, 35 years being in the water, I've never seen it like this.
Thank you. Again, any questions on it?
You're going to want a motion to Senate full board. And I'm looking at your figures here, and three and a half million. If we use ARPA funds, you'll get one and a half million from interest earnings from ARPA investments. Did you get those figures from Carrie? What would happen if we used option number two, the bond financing for the entire month? For the entire amount?
So I have not run those amortization schedules. For those, interest rates are trending around four and a half percent to issue debt. I'm guessing we would probably do a 15-year bond on that. But we do currently have three and a half million of ARPA funds unallocated. And this project is ready to go. So my recommendation would be that we use the remaining ARPA funds, and that would have our funds basically fully committed.
That would end, take care of the remaining of our ARPA funds?
Yep, that's correct, because we would also have to use a portion of the interest that we've earned on the ARPA funds to fully finance this. There will be some interest funds left that I would propose we use towards our landfill PFAS solution.
And I'm not seeing a lot of grants for radios. When we first did this project years ago, there was a lot of Homeland Security money. You know, it paid for a good portion of the tower build radios at the time, but we still did have to pull some, you know, substantial bond. It was a 15, 18 million dollar deal back in the day. But you're just not seeing those grant opportunities like you used to for the towers.
And like I said, this is a step, one step, that we have to do multiple steps down the road. So if we could, you know, get one out of the way, and then in a few years, be able to start looking at K-PAC and the Brockway-Yale area, and if we finance that down the road.
That's a good argument there, is why wouldn't we do Brockway or K-PAC rather than down there? Because the way I'm looking at this, is that district's going to get three and a half. Because the way I'm looking at this, is that district's going to get three and a half million of the ARPA funds, and the rest of the districts aren't going to get any part. Every commissioner got a million dollars to use if they wanted. And now you're saying that this is more important than K-PAC and Yale?
It's our, it's our largest radio failure area right now.
And it has been.
And it's been...
It's well documented.
Any other questions for Tina on this?
I'll make a motion to Senate full board. I'm not sure I'll support it, but I'll make a motion to Senate full board.
Second.
With which option for financing?
I'm sorry, what?
Which option for financing?
Use the ARPA funds.
Second. Motion and second. Any other questions on it?
Just one, because if we did do the bond, which I kind of lean to, but that would be very costly, and it wouldn't be, that's why I would say if we're going to do it, use the ARPA funds, because we have them available, and I would not want to spend excess county monies, because we might be looking at the prosecuting attorney monies and the landfill. So we're going to need those monies for that, rather than paying a low bond interest money.
Carrie, for the interest that was earned, does that also have to be allocated by the end of '24 and spent?
No, that does not. There's no restrictions on that. It's basically, could be counted as just general fund revenue.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Is this a roll call or a, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Moving on to, we have no other judiciary, public safety issues or matters? Can I get a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee. Can I have the clerk take the roll, please?
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosh.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. And are there any changes, additions, or relations to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Court.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't have any cards of anyone that wants to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard in the Human Services Committee? You have, you have three minutes.
You want this one?
He wanted under public safety. Put it there. You can speak either one.
Yeah, either one. Just, if you could go to the microphone so we can all hear you? Thanks.
I sound very good at public safety.
Okay.
Quite frankly, tonight, I don't want to speak very much.
Okay.
But quite frankly, what's going on is Saturday, I was up in Fort Freshland Township. I was just in town, and when I came back out of the alleys, I see a family standing right on the corner there, with, there was a male, a female, and two small kids in a car. And it's signed, saying they needed money. They were Middle Eastern descent. We had an invasion on their southern border, and I feel that they were illegal. And we had an election coming up. What are you guys up doing with the illegals in this town?
So, public comment is where you state you have three minutes to say your piece. It's not really a back and forth, but if you wanted to talk to us individually after the meeting about that, we could talk about it.
I want to know, so just like prosecutor, leaves down three people, that is not good. You all should not be doing a closed session by these requesting, it should be public.
Do you want to address closed session and why we do that? For the union bargaining?
So negotiating strategy with bargaining units is done in closed session for the reason that if you negotiate publicly, then there's, really isn't a negotiating process. It's similar to purchasing property. If we were to say, we're going to purchase this property for 200,000, suddenly that price goes up. So negotiating strategy, you know, per statute is allowed, an allowed topic for closed session.
You have thirty seconds, if there's anything you'd like to add?
All right, thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to be heard tonight? Seeing none. Any updates from the commissioners? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives this evening? None. No old business, moving on to new business, 7A, the kindergarten oral health assessment program, Smiles on Wheels agreement for the Health Department?
Make motion to send to the full board.
Thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got many questions.
Okay.
And you probably have the answers. What is the total cost of the project?
Liz is here. If she would like to...
Oh, yeah, I didn't see you, Liz. I was going to ask you specifically, so I didn't see you.
Yes, please.
Saw it, two pricing there. There's a two-month cost, and then you...
Right, so that contract, we're going to have to bring back another contract, new fiscal year, too. So this is just to finish out this year, and that'll cover us for two months for Smiles on Wheels to start the process with the schools. So new this year for 24, 25 school year, kiddos going into kindergarten need a oral health assessment. So if that's not done at their provider, when they enter kindergarten, Smiles on Wheels is contracting, going into our public schools to provide that service, and then refer them on should there be any further dental needs. So it is the smaller amount, I believe, that's on there?
Yes, thirteen thousand, roughly.
Yes, yep, so...
And this, and if you don't mind, this is a new law this year that is mandatory for students. If kids of kindergarten age and the parents refuse to have an oral exam, will they still be allowed to go to public schools?
Yes. Absolutely, you can opt out.
Okay, because I read it, and I didn't see that you could opt out, that I thought it would be mandatory. So I was concerned about that.
There are no penalties for the school, there is no penalties for a student, parent, anything like that. It's just, in addition, hopefully they opt in, or they're getting the service done through their private dental provider.
My concern was putting restrictions on a family.
Sure, sure, no mandate, no must be, no kicking out of school if you don't have your teeth stared at.
And don't have to wear masks?
No.
Just kidding.
No.
Unless your teeth are really bad.
No.
Is this coming out of your budget?
Yes, so this is part of our comprehensive agreement. I know we talked about that. This is now coming in annually at $60,000 right now, annually to us. And they just, with the new budget the governor passed, they've increased the allocation. We haven't seen exactly what that's going to be, but I would guess, there's going, I'd be guessing at the amount. But we will see an increase for the total year. The majority is going into the contract with Smiles, Smiles on Wheels, and we're keeping a little bit back for a little bit of administrative cost.
Much more comfortable. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Liz? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, the SC4 Nursing Services Agreement renewal, Health Department?
Make a motion to send to the full board.
Support. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7C, the 2025 Veterans Service Fund Grant Application?
Any reason not to do that for final action, because it's just a grant application?
It's not due yet.
I'm sorry, what?
It's not due yet.
Okay. I'll make a motion to send to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7D, the St. Clair County Library Little PIM Database?
Make a motion to send to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other human services matters tonight? Hearing none. We have, for information only, the Resolution 2024-01, the Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan, Board of Directors opposing the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services plans to implement conflict-free access and planning in Michigan. And then the second item is Resolution 2024-02, Region 10 Prepaid Health Plan, Board of Directors is opposing the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services proposed language for fiscal year 2025, limiting the funds and the use of the ISF.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Right.
Thank you. And then Item C, Health Department's Points of Interest for June. Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, that's part of my motion, A, B, and C.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'd like to request a two-minute break.
Thank you.
Ready?
I'm ready, you ready? Y'all ready?
Yep.
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners, Environmental, Public Works Committee meeting to order, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosh.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda this evening?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do have two citizens wishing to be heard tonight, and Robert Phelitz, in regards to the landfill.
Thank you, Commissioner Trello. Good evening, I'm Robert Phelitz. Representative Lisa McLean's recent visit to the landfill in June was an embarrassment to the St. Clair County government, this board, and an insult to the intelligence of the people of Smiths Creek, Kimball. A decision was made to use this visit to have the landfill team paint a rosy picture to the representative, that resulted in McLean penning a Facebook post that included the statement, "The Smiths Creek landfill has been maintaining a safe and clean community." Instead of using this opportunity to educate Representative McLean about the hydrogen sulfide releases, the bioreactor experiment had subjected our community to since 2018, and the severe air pollution that continued for over eight months last year, the landfill team chose to hide those facts from their visitor. Representative McLean seemed to be unaware of the pollution my community had suffered, or the ongoing issues with the landfill, the PFAS pollution that, PFAS pollution, and exorbitant costs to county taxpayers to control that mismanaged experiment. I responded to her post on Facebook saying, "Representative McLean, if this is your idea of the landfill maintaining a safe and clean community, as you say, I see that the team at the landfill did a thorough job of pulling the wool over your eyes." Here's what the state experts at Eagle said, I continued, about the landfill's performance. Eagle issued seven written violations to the landfill, each containing multiple citations for design and mismanagement error and the resultant pollution. There is an active state enforcement action in progress between Eagle and St. Clair County, and also a pending class action suit from the community. In addition, 53,000 gallons of PFAS laden leachate is being discharged into the Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant every day, and then into the St. Clair River with the PFAS intact. There is also air pollution from the generators at the landfill that would not exist without the septic bioreactor experiment. She promptly removed the Facebook post. To date, the company that was largely responsible for the problems at the landfill, CTI and Associates, is still carrying out their 1.3 million dollars per year no-bid contract. I have not heard any discussion about finding an alternate company to manage the landfill after this gross mismanagement, which has resulted in a huge liability for the taxpayers of this county. The landfill team owes the people of Kimball and Smiths Creek an apology for their part in this incident with Representative McLean. Thank you.
And then I have Sherry Schucraft. Thanks.
I'll try to talk as loud as I can, using the voice. And I'm going to add to what Robert said, St. Clair Township as well, because we've been affected. Commissioners, over the last 10 years, the county has taken landfill enterprise zone money and given it to the Convention Center, the Airport, and the Road Commission. This money was generated from excess landfill tipping fee charges, charges, which were in effect an unvoated tax. The amount of money over the last 10 years has been about 16.2 million dollars. Those funds were appropriated as follows: 2.1 million to the airport, 5 million to the Convention Center, 9 million to the Road Commission. This money should have been directed to an investment fund to purchase property for a new county landfill further away from the population, to avoid issues like pollution of our community, instead of being squandered on projects to make the county finances look good. The Smiths Creek landfill location is now too populated to sustain future landfill growth without significant community pushback. The community around the landfill is asking, what is the county's intent with the approximate 100 acres the county owns adjacent to the existing landfill? We would also like to know what is the county's intent with the landfill in general, including the ill-conceived septic bioreactor. We, the citizens, have a right to know if the county is intending to expand or sell the existing landfill. If so, we will move to protect ourselves. It is evident that our district commissioner and county government seem to be uninterested in protecting us from landfill expansion, future pollution, and declining property values brought on by the county's actions. When will you, the board, begin listening to your constituents regarding the landfill, 26 Mile Road Corridor, and numerous other issues in this county? The research has been done, the numbers tell all, and people have the ability to vote you out or keep you in. During a town hall meeting, Commissioner Bohm, you said, "St. Clair County just doesn't have the education." I saw it on video. What an appalling, arrogant, derogatory thing to say regarding this community. If there is a lack of education in this community, then we should do something about our schools. We grew up here, we live here, and we do, many of us are very well-educated. We want restoration and fostering of our agriculture, we want the landfill moved, we want the expansion or rezoning of 26 Mile Road stopped, we want to preserve our green space along with our small-town communities. We don't want the brick-and-mortar big business. This is our community that you have mismanaged while catering to a few. We are taking our county back, and we are demanding answers. What the community has suffered due to the landfill is egregious. You owe it to the community to act ethically and in good faith.
Moving on, is there any updates from the other commissioners?
Nope, seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives?
None, no old business. So I'll move to new business, Item 7A, which is landfill emerging compound treatment technologies, which is foam fractionation evaluation PFAS removal.
Make a motion and send it to full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to know the cost and the scope of the project.
I think Matt's here.
I got that same question, Herb, if you have one there.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, this item is for a pilot study to, with our specific leach aid, for a company, ECT2, um, who was included in the, actually included as one of the parties in the EPA grant that we've been considering, um, to essentially do a pilot study on their foam fractionation process, which removes up 99% or so of the PFAS compounds. Um, the total cost that has been quoted to us for that pilot study is $42,000 for it, and this will enable them to fine-tune their process specifically to our leach aid.
Anything else from Matt?
I wanted, I asked that same question. We'd actually met with the engineering groups out there, and, and they, you know, they said, "Well, do you do this, or you do that?" And they said, "The problem is, is we're not sure with the leach aid, with our treatment facility, because it's different than every other landfill," right? So, um, you know, doing the study to make sure, um, that it, uh, works as appropriate. I just want to touch base on PFAS. 10 years ago, did anybody in this room ever hear of PFAS? Nope. They didn't. Didn't test for it, didn't monitor it, so on and so forth. Now these monitorings, when you talk about the city of Port Huron, they have further restrictions on, on the leach aid treatment. Yeah, I'm just saying, now, now there's different measures, and we're taking measures to get to the acceptable standards. 10 years ago, what was an acceptable standard is different than what it was today. 10 years ago, they didn't even have standards for it. So now it's here, so to say that, um, well, we're taking corrective measures, it's almost like DT, they, they always, you know, whenever they move the bar, then they'll say, "Well, they're in an area of concern," or whatever you may call it. They give them an opportunity to respond, do what they have to do to get within those, you know, acceptable limits, so I just want to be, you know, it's not like we've been poisoning everybody for however long.
So, to the best of my knowledge, if, if I may, we've had PFAS compounds in our leach aid since, essentially, we've been landfilling municipal solid waste. PFAS compounds, as you probably have all been educated, are in all sorts of different products. That leach is out in the leach aid within the landfill. So we, this is an emerging contaminant, as, as Commissioner Bohm said, 10 years ago, it wasn't on the radar, now it is. So, the Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant has affluent requirements now for PFAS, where they have to meet certain levels, which are, by the way, significantly lower than the levels in our leach aid. So, they have told us, "We have an industrial pretreatment program permit for our wastewater to go there and be treated in their plant." So they have given us a directive that we have to be under 130 part per billion of one particular PFAS compound, PFOS. I won't try to give you what that, the chemical name that stands for, but it's in a group of pure and polyfluoral alkyl compounds. And we have a deadline to ensure that we have a treatment process in place that will ensure that we can meet that limit. Historically, we've met that limit 80, 85% of the time on our quarterly sample. However, we don't effectively treat for PFAS now. That is not part of what we designed our pretreatment system to do 12 years ago, as, but it is an emerging contaminant and something we're reacting to. And the foam fractionation process, um, is also very new. Everything is new in this field, but it is being used on landfills to treat landfill leach aid, um, across the country, and more and more places are enabling it, so by all accounts, it works pretty well.
Anything else for Matt? Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Maybe, probably don't go far, right?
Yeah, you might as well hang up there.
Don't go too far. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, landfill Tetra Tech Phase 2 air monitoring extension.
Make a motion and send it to full board.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion?
Same thing, just a rundown on the cost. If we don't, and I'm just, reason part of my doing this, because this is a, a concern within the community throughout St. Clair County, but specifically their neighborhood, is that if we don't talk about it and give it an explanation, I want an explanation, so the public can hear your explanation.
We are currently, um, doing air monitor on the landfill perimeter for hydrogen sulfide. And we've had, um, three, I'm sorry, four monitors in place now for about three and a half months since April, and we do consistent monitoring of where those levels are at any point in time. Hydrogen sulfide, as you've heard and we've known, um, and the emissions from the landfill were of significant concern. I believe we've made improvements, being that as it may, we want to continue being good stewards and continue the monitoring program that we have. So, this request in front of you is to, we have, currently have these monitors, um, on-site. We originally signed up for a 90-day contract with Tetra Tech, who administers the program, and this is to extend that an additional six months, um, to take us into December. The total cost for that additional 180 days, roughly six months, is another $51,912. I'm requesting approval for it.
Anything else for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, landfill, extension of the lease for perennial flare skid.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Same request motion.
Please.
So we also, much like the air monitoring, we entered into a lease of an additional flare skid, supplemental flare skid, that is placed up on the landfill near the area where we were having emissions problems, our Cell 8 area, to provide additional vacuum and destruction of the gas that's being created, um, to supplement our main gas system. So, what the quest in front of you is to also extend the lease for that particular flare skid for another six months, um, which would take us into early November, and the cost of that increase, um, is $42,900, which equates to $7,150 per month for lease of that skid to continue operation.
Matt, I know when we first started with the additional flares, that there was a little hiccup in getting it up and running. Is it consistently working now?
Actually, it is. Um, we originally had a different skid with a different company that was an old unit, had a lot of issues, we had to do a lot of babying and wrenching on it to keep it working well. Then we, um, replaced that with this particular unit, which was a brand-new unit, and that has worked very well, almost falsely, with the, with the exception of, um, condensate removal. We were having some issues draining condensate out of the system, um, as a whole up there. We've since solved that issue. We've had uninterrupted, um, um, the flare has been running and running uninterrupted now for about six weeks without any issues whatsoever, so I think we've ironed all the kinks out of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7D, the landfill, pine environment, environmental purchase order increase.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So we were leasing on a month-to-month basis, a portable hydrogen sulfide analyzer, analyzer that measures H2S in ambient air. The rental cost on that unit was roughly, I think, $2,900 and change a month, and actually, this is my error, um, we ended up keeping the unit longer than we thought we were going. We were getting requests from the DEQ, when they would visit, they would have the unit available, and we also were using it on a fairly regular basis on our own to supplement our air monitors, because you can take this wherever you want to go. Um, the rental on the unit is quite expensive, $3,000 a month, and we did return that unit. However, in order to pay the balance of the lease fees, I would be requesting approval for this amount. We actually, um, the total amount of the rental, um, is $19,000, um, and we've paid the company just shy of $10,000 in rental fees to date, and the $10,000 limit being what I need for approval, so that's why this is our project.
Good. Anything else for Matt?
You say that you're, you're using it, how frequently are you using it? Like, every, every day?
We were probably using it, uh, two to three times a week.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, contract approval, landfill, gas system improvements, B&amp;V Earth Movers LLC.
Make a motion and send it to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is the expensive one, so.
This is, this is the expensive one.
Give a rundown.
Periodically, um, we do improvements to our overall gas system, gas extraction system. We've actually had, after the initial constructions, we've had seven additional projects where we added wells, added header, and other infrastructure and, you know, pertinences, if you will, to the system. As we grow, we have to grow the system with it. Most of the, these improvements and additions have been vertical gas, excuse me, vertical gas well installation or replacements, and that's exactly what this project is for. This project is to re-drill 14 of our existing vertical gas extraction wells and to add three brand-new vertical extraction wells in an area that we feel we could benefit from better coverage and gas extraction, near our Cell 8 area. So it's to improve on the improvements that we've made in collection in that area. We're doing this in large part, well, for two actual reasons, as I say in the summary, for both regulatory and performance reasons. We want to continually make our system better, have better coverage, and extract all the gas we can. At the same time, regulatory requirements for gas system with the state of Michigan have changed, and so we've got other, we've got new rules we have to comply with, more coverage, um, higher maintenance, all sorts of different things. So this is, kind of comes from two different places. So it's for B&amp;V Earth Movers LLC, they're out of Wixom, Michigan. They are actually the company who put in our perimeter gas extraction system last November and December. They are fully qualified, they are the only bidder we had for the project, and I chalk that up to just about every other landfill, municipal solid waste landfill in the state who operates a gas system, is doing a similar thing with their system. So, there's a lot of demand on the contractors out there who do this specific type of work to come to their site and do that work. We were, we did receive the one bid, we've worked with this company before, they do very good work, and the total cost for that work, um, that they bid was $978,560, just shy of a $1 million budget, and that's what I'm requesting approval for today.
So you're gonna get three new wells and rebuild 14, if I heard you correctly?
That's correct.
The wells that you currently have, what's the average life span of one?
Vertical wells typically will last you on the order of 10 years, and then they need to be rehabbed, re-drilled, abandoned, and then new ones burned. Most of our gas extraction, I will say though, comes from our lateral wells related to the bioreactor cells. That's where most of the gas is pulled through, but these are kind of supplemental.
I'm sure it's similar, but do they use rotary wells? Weld drills? Drills?
Yeah, there's a bucket auger that makes the hole down into the waste, and then it's simply backfilled with stone and the collection pipe. They go down within 10 foot of the bottom of the landfill, so depending upon where we're at, that's how deep they are. I think, I think this particular project, the wells that we are drilling, range from about 45 feet to about 90 feet. That's just off topic.
Anything else for Matt?
Make the motion.
Support.
Already had a motion.
We had the discussion too. Well, I'm gonna do a Dave Rushing. I started out my construction career in B&amp;V Construction. I was 19 years old. Woo! Anyways, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E. Oh, no, we're not done yet.
Oh, one more.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna skip to the next one.
Can we, can we do G? First, will that be all right?
Can we do G first while he's up there? All right, let's do that. So, Item 7G is the landfill leach aid PFAS treatment evaluation proposal.
Motion sent to full board.
Support. Any discussion?
So the background to this, I don't actually, I tried to pull this off of the agenda, but it wasn't my item, so I couldn't get it down, but I can talk, you know, in general about what this item is for. So, as you're, as the board is aware, there is a, um, US EPA climate justice grant opportunity out there, and there's a company who had brought that to us, and that grant proposal that was being, is being proposed consists of essentially three pieces. It consists of a dedicated self-contained wastewater treatment plant, from which the wastewater treatment, our leach aid is what we're talking about, could be discharged directly to a wastewater. waterway instead of through the port here on, to the port here on a wastewater trail, wastewater treatment plant, and the POTW that takes it there. There is also a second step in that process where PFOS is pulled out of the leach aid. And part of that proposal was a foam fractionation process, which you are recommending approval for that pilot study earlier. And then the third part was a gasification or other methodology that would destroy the residual PFOS wastewater after the treatment, so that the PFOS would go away in total. We have then had meetings regarding that particular proposal and have been looking for some backup on the proposed pieces of it, operating costs, longevity references, where is it being used, and those kind of things. At one point in that process, and Carrie, correct me if I'm characterizing this wrong, we thought that it would be worth, in the county's benefit, to find an outside expert and to evaluate that particular proposal and give us some guidance on recommendations and what they thought. That company that was contacted and we discussed that project with is Tetra Tech, the same greater company is doing our air monitoring. And I do not have the proposal in front of me, but I know there's essentially three pieces to that. The first piece, which I believe has already been authorized, is a quick evaluation of the... Carrie, would you rather characterize it instead of me talking?
I can.
Why don't you?
So, there were three tasks. Task one would be the grant review, to review the EPA grant and the technology being proposed to see if it would be feasible or work at our landfill. A lot of pieces of that project, you know, we wanted to see where it has successfully operated in other landfill facilities. So, what Tetra Tech will do, will do the grant review, the feasibility, but then as part of that, they will evaluate basically the three different PFOS treatment programs that are the proven technologies. So, the foam fractionization, you previously approved to do the testing on that, but they will look at that process. They're going to look at reverse osmosis and granular activated carbon ion exchange and an evaporation process. And what they'll do is, based on our leach aid, our composition, come up with what treatment would be best, but they also, which is something I've been wanting for the grant, is basically giving us a cost benefit of each process. How much does it cost to operate? You know, I understand the EPA grant is a no-match grant, but once that system is built, it's up to us to operate it, maintain it, and if it doesn't work properly for our leach aid or for our system, you know, then we could potentially be in a system, in a position where we may have to repay grant funds. So, we want to be very careful before we enter into it. All of these different technologies are costly, so we believe it makes sense to spend the money upfront. The individuals we met with from Tetra Tech, they have extensive landfill-specific experience on doing these different items, so we feel like they would be able to give us a good analysis for the board to decide what the best action is.
Am I reading this correct? Three steps or one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred dollars?
That is correct. That does include two more pilot tests to test the reverse osmosis on our leach aid and the...
GAC?
Yes, the GAC. I did ask the consultants if the pilot testing was necessary because that is a significant part of the proposal and has had indicated earlier. Your leach aid composition of each landfill is kind of unique, so they indicated that they highly suggest that, but if the board opted to not do those, that they could do a scientific analysis outside of that, but we wouldn't have a full, a full test to prove it works.
Two things. One, I like the third option is that PSAPs disappear entirely, the third part of what you explained, if I heard you correctly. The one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred, but that doesn't include any infrastructure, does it?
No, that, this is just the evaluation of the different technologies.
Because it could get very expensive for the infrastructure. Okay. It ain't going to be cheap.
Anything else for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Matt. Item 7F, the resolution twenty-four thirteen adopting a brownfield plan for Corcat Properties in Elgin Act.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Any discussions?
I want a lot of discussion. Please explain it all to me. Very expensive. I'm going to start to say a few words for even these guys. We talk a lot about, about development, affordable housing today, which is kind of an oxymoron because nothing seems to be affordable. This is a tool that probably within the last three to five years that the state put in place that developers are able to capture taxes to help pay for the infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, those types of things. So, this is, if I'm not mistaken, Elgin Act's probably the first community that we have seen that is using this mechanism to help finance the water, roads, sewers, so on and so forth. I did talk to the mayor yesterday, I saw Rocky. This did pass the Elgin Act City Council the other day, seven oh, and now it's coming before us.
Yeah, well, thank you. Good summary. So, brownfield plans have been around for a long time, but a little less than a year ago, the state of Michigan introduced a new category of eligibility in brownfield plans, and it's housing. And the impetus for that is, you hear all around the state, not just here in St. Clair County, but there's a, the word crisis has been thrown out, there's a housing, there's a housing issue, a housing crunch in Michigan, and there's just been not a lot of sources to really address that. And so, this item eligibility was entered into the brownfield TIF capture laws that exist at the state level. So, with that, taxes can be captured on the future taxable value of new housing developments. And in this particular case, it's being used to address the infrastructure costs of this development. And I don't want to speak too much, we do have the developer here who can address some of those questions, but it's being done to allow, to bring those houses to market at a more affordable cost in that part of the community. There's not been a whole lot of housing starts in that part of the community for a long time, and there's always been a lot of talk of the need for housing to keep and retain people in that part of the community. So, the, this tool is, has been looked at and developer brought forth, is bringing forth, is a request in a brownfield plan at this time for consideration. The details of the brownfield plan are in here, I can get into the numbers of it, but I have a few specific questions about it. That's the impetus between, behind why the brownfield tool is being used in this particular case.
Pretty substantial, so what's the cost of the county?
Uh, well, it's...
It's brownfield dollars, I know it has to be used for that.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's twenty-nine mils that'll be captured on this project. Twelve of those are Elgin Acts. The remaining seventeen mils are distributed amongst various taxing jurisdictions. I don't have the exact breakdown of the millage of those seventeen, the county mills. But I think it's important to note that it's a group effort, if you will, and the biggest lift is Elgin Acts, and they've already approved it, seeing that they felt that there was a need for this in their community, so that's why they support it.
So, question, Jeff, you can't capture the veterans' millages, the senior millages, those types of millages, correct? Or are they capturable?
I want to speak towards the different types of millages.
Sure.
I know our portion's like five-point-six mils, roughly five-point-three is what the county's portioning.
Correct. So, good evening. So, with the brownfield plan, this particular brownfield plan, we can capture potentially local millages and school millages. In this particular situation, we're not capturing any of the school millages. And then when it comes to the local capture, the other certain millages that we can't capture are special assessments and debt millages. So, really, the only one that we're not capturing is the school debt millage of, I think it's two-point-eight mils. But when it comes to the other millages, now, this is, these are for the improved taxable value on the new build, not the base value. So, anything that's being captured today, currently, on the existing property will continue to go to the taxing jurisdictions as it normally would. It's only on the new taxes based on performance, based on whether these structures are built, whether the infrastructure's put in and so forth. But yes, the millages that will be captured are point-five-five-nine-eight for the drugs, point-seven-nine-eight-three for seniors, one-point-two mills for library, point-four-nine-four-four for parks, point-two-four-nine-five for county roads, EMS point-five, county operating five-point-three-one-five-three, college one-point-eight-eight-two-zero, the RISA millages, which are about two-point-four, two-point-five, a little bit more in that, city operating, which would be twelve-point-nine-four-four-six, school sinking fund one-point-eight-seven-eight-seven, for a total of twenty-nine-point-two-three-nine-two mils. And then any increase, obviously, in the school millages, obviously, that would be paid, particularly in the state education tax, because majority of these are going to be principal resident exempted likely. So, there's no, they're not going to be paying eighteen mils into that as normal.
So, for twenty-four years, twenty-nine mils will not be collected, twenty-nine mils. Well, if I did your math right, you got roughly fifty-eight total down there.
Total millages is twenty-nine-point-two-three-nine-two that will be captured.
That will be collected, but you're also going to, city of Elgin Act is twelve, and the county won't get seventeen, correct? For twenty-nine. So, there's twenty-nine that won't be collected. I only got one other question. If there's any special assessment, you said any, if they have a special assessment for police or fire, that would not be...
If it was a special assessment, it would not. And we also verified that their administrative costs or administrative fees not going to be captured, there's a garbage fee that's not captured, there's a couple of things. The other thing, too, to take into consideration from a cost perspective is that they're all going to be paying the, their new fees for sewer and water in those locations as well.
Anything else for these guys? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, there's no landfill report. Any other environmental, public works matters this evening?
Make motion to receive and file information only?
Support.
Okay, moving on. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Support.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. All right, at this time, I'll call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Beeden.
President.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Trowlow.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion to accept the agenda.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. We have one citizen to be heard, Robert Felix.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushing. I am Robert Felix. I was going to talk about the EDA and conflict of interest on members of this board, but after listening to the last half hour, I'm going to wing it. So, when I hit three minutes, Commissioner Rushing cut me off. I'm sitting here listening to a lot of this, and I'm reminded about government picking winners and losers. A lot of these things are touching on that, people. We're picking winners and losers instead of the free market that we so openly espouse all the time. The landfill issue is disgusting. I hear the hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent for a misguided project that polluted our community and should have never happened, and now you're faced with it. And I agree with what Matt is saying. A lot of these things have to be done. You've got the state coming up your butt there on the enforcement action, and they're not going to quit. And the people need to know that, that that is the reason a lot of these costs are here. The third Edison generator didn't materialize. We're flaring off most of the gas that the taxpayer spent thousands and thousands of dollars to generate in the first place. This is a gross failure. You're sitting on a hundred acres over there. I know the intention is to grow this and continue. When I am on this board after August sixth, January first, I will be discussing this in person because it's just disgusting watching this as a member of the tax-paying public of what we have just talked about here. Go home and think about that. You're picking winners and losers, and by and large, they're losers. Thank you.
Okay, we have no other citizens. Any updates? Any conceptual initiatives? Any old business? Move to seven A. Transdev first vehicle contract addendum?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven B, emergency management radio purchase, American Rescue Plan Funds request.
Make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven C, Commissioner Bohm, District Five, American Rescue Plan Project, St. Clair Area, Fire Authority, Fire Department radios. Make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven D, Commissioner Rushing, District Six, American Rescue Plan Project, St. Clair County Road, Commission, Wales Township Road Project.
Motion. Support.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Who, uh...
Jeff.
I can't hear. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven E, contract approval, TriStar Roofing Administration Building Roof Replacement.
Motion to move to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven F, contract approval, AEW Airport Drainage Solution.
Make motion, send it full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven G, contract approval, Spicer Group Intervention Center Facility Assessment, and this is for final action?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Trowlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Seven H, contract approval, City Elevator of Michigan District Courthouse Elevator Refurbishment, gray-in elevator, because we've got different color ones. Have a motion.
Motion to send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Contracted denim, seven I, contracted denim, federal armored truck for the treasurer.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any objections? Motion passed. Seven J, policy revisions, recruitment and hiring, paid time off, salary and wages, expense reimbursement, management rights and responsibilities, working compensation, timekeeping, family medical leave, short-term disability and long-term disability, and discipline and discharge. Have a motion.
Make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven K, agreement for allocation of the Kroger Settlement Agreement opioid funds.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? Carrie, what's the dollar figure on this?
This one is about four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars over an eleven-year period.
Thank you. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, moving to A. This time, do you have any other Ways and Means Matters? Yeah, just one quick one, David. I don't know where this ever came from, but the inter-county agreement that I signed doesn't exist. I never signed an inter-county agreement with Macomb County, nor would I have the authority to do that. So, I just want to...
So I just want to clear the air on that. Thank you.
I have no other Ways and Means Matters information. Only can I have a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.
Thank you. Hey, can you say this one more?